All right, ready to go. Hello, everyone. So it's nice to be here tonight. I'm sorry, we're a few minutes late. Our Valley View and Gildersley Zoom Town Hall went a little bit over. So appreciate your patience. It's nice to see we have forty-seven people joining us on our Zoom tonight, and we have several more on our live stream on YouTube. So a couple of housekeeping matters. First of all, I'm Charles Burton. I'm your new superintendent. What we're going to do tonight is I'm going to spend just a brief few minutes here introducing the plan and kind of laying the groundwork for what we hope to do for the rest of the summer and into the fall. Then I'm going to introduce you to Mr. Hershon, who is our new middle school principal. Then we're going to have a Q and A portion of tonight. So if you're watching this in Zoom, click the chat button and type your question as we go through here. And what we'll do at the end is we'll use the chat to frame the question and answer. If you're watching us on the YouTube livestream, type your answer in the YouTube Live, and our technicians will copy and paste your question into our chat log. So after Mr. Hershon goes through his PowerPoint, we'll get to the Q and A portion. I'll identify the person who wrote the comment, and we'll unmute you, and we'll make sure that we answer your question fully. So welcome, everyone. I hope that you're able to be watching this from a home with power and internet. And I am really sorry for those of you who aren't able to join us tonight either because you don't have internet. And I'm saying that because we're going to record this and post this for people who still aren't able to get on the internet because they're out of power. And I imagine some of you are using cellular or at friends' or neighbors' houses or family members' houses watching this. So I'm really sorry for those of you who are struggling without power. I would remind you that the high school here is open for community use. If you need to come in and cool off, the air conditioners are running. We have the Wi-Fi set, so if you need to come up and check your email and spend some time online, you're more than welcome to do that. Boy, I have seen plenty of people up here today who just need to charge their devices. So come on up, the high school is open. If you need to charge your device or get on the internet or just want to cool off. It wasn't that hot today, but it was nice. So I'm really sorry if you lost power. I hope EverSource has got its act together and is getting you back up and running. And boy, 2020 has been a pretty lousy year so far. I don't know any other way to describe it. I can't remember a more crummy year. I can't wait for New Year's Eve when we can put this all behind us. So with that said, I want to start by recognizing the fact that since March thirteenth, things have been really surreal, awkward, stressful, frustrating, confusing in a lot of different ways. And unfortunately, I think we have to be prepared for the very real possibility that that is likely to continue until this COVID-19 is in the rearview mirror and we have an effective treatment or an effective vaccine. To that end, as we consider how we're going to open the school year, our first and almost only consideration is how we can do that as safely as possible. Right now in Connecticut, the numbers look really good. Our infection rate is down. We have gone through several days now with no deaths. The hospital rates are low. Go Connecticut, keep wearing your masks and doing the right thing because we are in a very good place. Because of that, we are likely to open the schools in person on September first. Now, it is still to be determined whether it would be a full reopening with everybody back in or a hybrid reopening, which would mean we would divide our students in half. Half of the students would come two days a week. All students would be remote learning one day while we cleaned our buildings, and the other half of students would be in-person learning two days a week. So Cohort A would be in on a Monday, Tuesday, while Cohort B distance learn. Everybody would distance learn on Wednesday while we sanitized our buildings. Cohort B would be in Thursday, Friday, while Cohort A distance learn. So Mr. Hershon, our middle school principal, is going to talk to you a little bit more about what that would look like specifically at the middle school. The numbers are specifically, if we are less than ten per one-hundred-thousand infections in our county, we would be able to open fully or in person. If we were between ten to twenty-five new infections per one-hundred-thousand, that would signal to us that we need to be really careful, and we would be in the yellow zone. And if we got to a point where COVID spiked and we ended up with twenty-five or more new infections per one-hundred-thousand people, we would return to distance learning. Right now, we're well below ten per one-hundred-thousand new infections. So again, we're in a good place, and it is likely that we will open for in-person learning come September first. So with that said, I want to introduce you to Mr. Hershon. He is our new middle school principal. He has a PowerPoint presentation for you, a Google slide, and he's going to talk you through what distance learning, what hybrid, and what all-in-person learning would look like specifically at Portland Middle School. Again, as we go through, please enter your questions in the chat log, and we will answer all of our questions once we get through the presentation portion of tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Burton. It's been a very interesting... This is finishing up my first official week here in Portland. And a lot of the parents that are on tonight, I've been doing some meet and greets throughout the summer since August or since July. So hopefully, I've gotten a chance to meet some of you, and I'll be continuing to do that weekly throughout the summer. So hopefully, I'll get a chance to meet more of you as we go forward. In planning for the middle school going into this year, we're obviously planning, just like every school is, for those three scenarios that Charles laid out, the full in-person, the distance learning, and the hybrid between the two. This summer, we have done... No, this is okay. This summer, we have been doing quite a bit of work, and I could say I've done quite a bit over the past couple of weeks. And I've been just blown away by the level of professionalism and talent that exists in the staff of Portland Middle School and in Portland as a whole and in the engagement of families. The feedback that we've been getting has been absolutely essential to developing this plan. So I really appreciate that to everyone that's reached out in my time here so far. So what we've done so far this summer, I've already been meeting with teacher committees around distance learning and teacher meetings about school climates. And I'm mentioning school climate as well because, as I reminded, while we are planning for COVID, we're also planning in general for what's best for middle school students as a whole. All of this plan is about developing what is safest for students but without losing what a middle school identity should have, what a middle school should provide. So we have been reconfiguring physical spaces. Students will start the year in what we're calling the stay-put model, where if we were fully in-person, there are ten locations that we can maximize social distancing within the middle school building, where students will be able to be at least six feet apart. And if we're in the hybrid model, closer to ten to twelve feet apart of having physical distance, and they'll be remaining in that location throughout the day. Teachers will be rotating through in order to minimize any mixing of those cohorts in the hallway. So right away, we're following that state recommendation of cohorting to ensure the absolute... to maximize safety for our students and for their families at home. We're going to have strict cleaning protocols for teachers that go between those spaces to make sure that we're taking care of our teachers as well and giving them socially distant workrooms that have twenty to thirty feet of distance between each other so they're able to work in a comfortable space as well. Throughout that monitoring of those locations, we're also taking a look at just our health and safety directives, develop best practices and protocols. So I started working with a reopening task force that's building-based today. The district one's been going on since June. Today, I started working with a school-based one to really start ironing out what the protocols will look like in the middle school. Some examples, we're talking about student lockers. And just in general, we want, again, our goal here is to minimize the mixing of any of our cohorts, to really ensure that we are keeping those cohorts with integrity. So we'll probably not be using lockers to start the year, and students will have their belongings with them. But again, within this plan, we're planning on those multiple scenarios for Rancho. As the hybrid model, as Charles suggested, which would have half of those students in the building each day, where they would be two days of in-person learning and three days of distance learning throughout the week. The full in-person model, which will include every day in-person, but again, with a very different structure of what school looks like because we will be ensuring that there aren't any shared materials. We'll be ensuring social distancing at all times. Things like lunch and things like... Those things will occur within their cohorts, most likely in the classroom. Obviously, though, a middle schooler staying within one room throughout the day gets to a point where that could be difficult and might not be best for their developmental age. Middle schools are used to moving around. They're used to having that flexibility, and we want to find ways to ensure that as well at the middle school. So we're going to be using our vast amount of outdoor spaces here for mask breaks and for ensuring that we keep our middle schoolers developing those relationships and having some movement throughout the day so they don't feel like they're just stuck in one room the whole time. Beyond that, we will be increasing the frequency of the amount of social and emotional learning that we do. We're going to be increasing the amount of time we spend with advisory, especially as we start the year. We can switch to the next slide. I'll kind of talk about what's going to be the same here at the middle school and what's going to be different. So things that are going to change. Instructional... We're going to be planning a lot for how our instruction needs to change to meet the needs of these different environments. In the spring, I mean, and the teachers did a fantastic job at the middle school in the spring delivering distance learning, especially with very little lead time to plan for how they were going to deliver that instruction in this new environment. Now that we have the time this summer, we are getting our curriculum specialists together. Our teachers are working on curriculum writing throughout the month of August. We are going to be adapting how we deliver instruction in this model to best adapt to a more of a blended learning environment that combines physical learning and digital learning to make sure that we are maximizing the time that students have in front of teachers and we are using technology effectively but not overly relying on it for all parts of instruction. In terms of grouping, as I said before, we're going to be cohorting. So students will be in a full model cohort with twenty other peers. In a hybrid model, it would be somewhere around between ten and twelve peers within their class, and they would remain with that cohort all day. So ultimately, what we're seeing at the middle school is that you would have two cohorts. Your cohorts of students that you come on the bus with and your cohort of students that you are in your class with throughout the day. That will help us in the... If ever it were to occur that we need to conduct contact tracing if there were to be a confirmed case of COVID within the community. In terms of our facilities, we're going to be doing increased cleaning protocols. Things like our bathrooms, our water fountains, things of that nature. Again, any of those possible locations that could be sharing cohorts, we're going to have different monitoring duties for teachers to ensure that we don't have multiple students from different cohorts in the bathroom at the same time, making sure, again, that we are keeping the integrity of that cohort so that I could honestly tell parents that your student in that cohort will stay with that group of students all day and without mixing of others. The scheduling is going to... In order to make that work, we are shifting our schedule to blocks. It minimizes the amount of movement that teachers will have to do throughout the day, minimizing the number of potential individuals that are moving in the building. So instead of teachers moving around eight different times and seeing eight groups of students, it will be somewhere between... Each student will have between four and five classes a day. Those will be eighty-eight-minute blocks. The only time that looks a little different is when... For some of those classes that may, in a traditional model, have been every other day classes, like PE in seventh grade or world language in seventh grade, those classes will be split in a period and go forty-five minutes each. So on certain... On one day of their... If you think of it as an A-B day for the two days there in school or for how we go every other day in school, on an A day, they might have four classes in that day, and on a B day, they could have five. In terms of activities and athletics, we want to ensure above all else, safety. And so we're going to make sure any club or activity that can run in a distance environment, we are going to ensure it does. And those that need to be implemented in person, we will take a look at on a case-by-case basis, seeing how we'll be able to evaluate how we can keep kids safe within that environment. Athletics is still something that we are planning for. I know that I met with Ms. Lawson and Mr. Sarah yesterday, along with Dr. Burton, and we were starting to talk about the opening up of sports for the fall. We are currently working on our plans for that to ensure safety. We want kids, as they're coming to the middle school, to have a middle school experience, and we will do what we can to ensure that. So activities, athletics, those are high priorities for me to make sure that students don't just come to school to feel like they are doing distance learning in here. We want to make sure they feel like they are getting a middle school experience. Something that will change are lunches. Instead of being in the cafeteria, we will have lunches being brown-bagged in the cafeteria and brought to students. Students will be using an online system to order in the morning. We will be delivering it into their classrooms. However, we'll be... Whenever the weather is nice, we will be frequently using outdoor spaces for lunches in order to allow kids to spread out more and be able to safely take off masks. I mentioned bathrooms previously and lockers previously. The last kind of thing I'd want to talk about is visitors. That will change slightly for our protocol for visitors coming into the building. We will have... We're putting up a kind of a bank teller-style window replacing one of the glass panels in the office to ensure that if there are belongings that need to be that maybe a student forgot at home and a parent's coming to drop off, we have the ability to put them in a location in our hub that our secretaries will come and grab after the parent has left. That way, to maximize that social distancing. Then we can go on to the next slide. So one thing I want to talk about, and you'll see it as you go through our distance learning site, is I've tried to kind of put the idea of what a day in the life can look like. And you'll see in the center of the page here, that is what a day in life looks like on the website. If you were to click on the different reopening models tab, under hybrid, it has a... It specifies what it might look like for a day in the life. And I wanted to highlight the hybrid model primarily because it is probably the most different from what we've experienced in-person learning and we've experienced distance learning. I wanted to kind of explain what a hybrid could look like. I truly want people to think of it like a flipped classroom or blended learning environment, where students are strategic... We are strategically planning what is it best for a kid to access with an expert teacher in front of them? And what is it best that can be facilitated asynchronously at home? Balancing both of those two levels of instruction. So when students can work independently, I want them to be able to do so with their distance. And when students need that expert teacher in there, like when they require feedback from teachers or when they need to apply that learning in a collaborative session, I want them to do that with teachers. So it will not be that a group is in school and a group is at home, and they're doing the same thing on a certain day. We're going to be off where... So that we are strategically using the time in school and the time out of school. In school days, bus pickup will occur. Students will still enter the same front area of the bus. However, instead of remaining in the hub waiting for the school day to start, we will be asking students to go directly to where their cohort's location will be. We will be marking off areas for students to safely sit in the morning, and we will have coverage to watch to make sure students are maintaining that social distance. When students enter the classroom, they'll be given the instruction to immediately use hand sanitizer, go to their desk, and kind of set themselves up in their location. We're going to work on the first... For the first thing students will do on their first day in school, on those in-school days, will be to do some level of advisory. As I mentioned before, the social-emotional learning needs coming out of what we've been experiencing with distance learning and COVID in general are truly something that I want to make sure we are directly targeting students. When I'm thinking of the first few weeks of school, we are not jumping directly into our curriculum. We are really helping students understand what school looks like in this model. We really want to help train students to see this... These are the protocols. These are the expectations, perhaps school works, and get them comfortable with that. So we'll be using advisory form more frequently to start the school year to give students, A, a really small group with a teacher that they will get to know very well and build that relationship, turning that teacher into a go-to for them whenever they might have questions. They will have then their four academic periods, as I laid out before, through the block scheduling, where teachers will be rotating through to provide instruction. Again, maximizing social distancing throughout that instructional block. And then for dismissal, we will be dismissing groups by class in order to ensure that those cohorts do not mix until they are on the bus with the group of students they would have already seen earlier in that day. For the distance learning days, students, we will be having an advisory component with the distance learning, which is more of a check-in to check in on the work that you need to do outside of school to make sure that you have someone that you can reference with and connect with so that you know you're on the right track. You will still follow your four academic periods on the days that you are in distance. However, your activities will be different. And we will also be looking to increase our level of intervention around the feedback we're getting from students during those in-person and distance learning days. We'll be looking to embed intervention throughout those distance learning days as well so that students are getting the level of support that they need, whether it's extension to go beyond the standard that they've been learning or intervention to help support them master a new standard. Then we can go to the... So things that are not changing. One thing that's a high priority is maintaining a middle school team model. I want that... We are a middle school, not a junior high school. Part of that means is that each student is on a team. And that is a team of teachers that meet daily or meet regularly to discuss and plan for the needs of the kids that they have in common. We want to make sure that we maintain that. We feel that that's the best... I feel like that is what's most supportive of their social-emotional learning needs and will enable us to embed those protocols and those student work habits throughout the curriculum. We want to ensure equity and access. I've been working very hard with our guidance counselor in putting... In working on building cohorts so that every student that wants to take the foreign language they want to take is able to. Every student, regardless of the math level they take, has access to band and choir, and we're able to do that without mixing cohorts. Academic rigor is absolutely still a priority at the middle school. We want to push students to learn those grade-level standards and to get beyond those grade-level standards and to do so with a 21st century environment. And honestly, 21st century, I put that phrase up there, but we are well into the 21st century. What I want students to learn is a globally competent curriculum, and we are going to continue to push that to make sure that our students are prepared to be college and career-ready through the alignment with what we do and with the high school does. Professional development and growing our teachers is absolutely still a priority for us at the middle school. We know that by ensuring the best, high-quality teachers, we will ensure high-quality instruction and learning for our students. So we will still be doing our due diligence to ensure a rich professional learning opportunity for our teachers. And the Highlander spirit and pride. It's kind of the reason I said that we've already started meeting with the school climate committee. That is what I want. And if you've had any opportunity to meet with me so far this summer, the question I've been asking every parent, every teacher, and every student is what are the things that make Portland Middle School special? And what are those touchstones that we need to make sure we celebrate throughout the year? We're going to be working hard to be creative around how do we ensure that we come together as a community and celebrate, even with this difficult element of distance learning? So we're going to be continuing to plan to build that level of spirit and pride throughout the school. I think I have one more slide, which is just simply, we need support from our families with our guidelines and our protocols. We're going to be giving... I'm going to be working with the school-based reopening task force to put together a handbook of protocols that will be sent home prior to the first day of school to make sure that parents are fully aware of the protocols and what we are doing to keep your children safe when they're in the building. I want to make sure that you understand safety is our top priority. So as we give you those protocols, I ask you to look through them when they get sent. Make sure you review them with your children home. We will be at school as well. And just help us support that so that when kids come to the building, they are prepared to meet the expectations of learning in this very different environment. Please, please feel free to reach out to me. I want to maintain open communication with all of you. I've already spoken to a few of you, and I know there's interest in getting the Portland Middle School PTO up and running. And I'm going to continue to reach out to you to try and build that level of communication back and forth between myself and the community. You can follow me on Twitter. You can send me an email. Any way that you want to get in touch with me, please. I encourage anyone to reach out who has questions as we go through this summer. I'm always looking for the next ideas. My goal is to figure out what are the barriers around those excellent ideas that are coming from teachers, from students, from parents? And how do we effectively work around those barriers so that we can do so safely for those ideas that may greatly benefit our students?
All right, excellent. So I'm monitoring the chat, and I see some excellent questions that I'm looking forward to getting to here. So for anybody else who hasn't posted your questions, please post your questions. So for anybody else who hasn't posted your questions, please post your questions here. Or if you're watching this on the YouTube stream, post them in YouTube and our technicians will copy and paste them here. What I'll do is, is I'll identify who asked the question, and I'll ask our technicians to unmute that person, and then we can engage in a discussion in case your questions are more nuanced or I need to answer them better. So, if I could ask our gentleman in the booth here to please unmute Brenda. Brenda wants to know if the school's starting times are going to be the same as they have been in the past. So Brenda, are you with us?
Hi, yes, I'm right here.
Hi Brenda.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. Yes, so our first four days of school, which are September 1st, 2nd, 3rd and 4th, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, those are going to be half-days. But as soon as that's over, then they would be the regular school days that, you know, that has been here each year. So the answer is, in short, is yes.
Okay, I guess the only reason I was asking, I guess more so if we went to that hybrid model, if anything would change if it wasn't, you know, full-time?
Yeah, well, it definitely would change, but the start and the end time of the day wouldn't change for those kids when they're here in person.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Can I add to that?
Sure.
Yeah, one thing I would add to that is, we're going, and I want to maintain for the, for, within this, within the hybrid model, the expectation would be that the start and end time on the distance learning day would be the same as well. We're hoping to figure out way, I'm going to be working with teachers to find ways to engage students creatively with live check-ins, to make sure that they have an opportunity to do so throughout the day for their attendance and to make sure they're up and engaged and ready to go.
Did that answer the question Brenda? Okay, let's go to Diane Lopez, if we can unmute Diane. Mr. Hershon, Diane would like to know if the incoming 7th graders have any orientation?
Absolutely. So I know that a Get to Know the School video was made at the end of last year. We'll be looking to do some level of orientation for our 7th graders. We're going to be planning a kind of an orientation for 7th and for 8th graders, because Getting to Know this Environment will be different. So absolutely, we will be doing some level of orientation for 7th graders. We are also planning for, again, those first few days of schools to really be an orientation to school, to get students ready for a very different environment. Along with that, I will be, I have been doing so throughout this past month, and I'll be continuing to do meet and greets with students throughout the summer. One of those will be directly related to incoming 7th graders and the questions that they have.
Can I just add one, thank you for that information, that's great. Can I just add one additional question that I thought about? Is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
Of course.
Well, for those students with 504s that need to get adjusted, because now we're in a different environment than we were in the spring, will that be able to take place and who should we contact? Should we contact Dawn Davis?
Right now, you should be reaching out to me if you have questions around that. And I may need to work with Ms. Davis to figure out the answers to that. Obviously, our students with IEPs, our students with 504s that have these individualized plans, we want to work to accommodate the necessary plans to ensure that their individual program is met, and especially those transitional needs of coming into the school are met. But if you have a question specific around your child, I would ask you to reach out to me. I'm still working to get to know every student and the individual plans in the building. I'll continue to do so throughout the summer. So it may, it may take me a minute to check in with Ms. Davis to get on the same page around how we're going to do that going forward. But please reach out to me when you have individual questions about the transition for your child, if they have individualized needs.
Awesome, thank you Chuck.
Yep, Diane, I put, I posted in here for you and for everybody Chuck's email address. My email address is in there, and then Jamie McDermott is the middle school counselor, her email address. And then Dawn Davis's email is there too.
All right, I needed Jamie's, I have everybody else's, that's awesome, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Welcome to the Portland Middle School, you're going to love it. Okay, so let's see where we are here. If we could unmute, really good question from Stacy Prince. Really good question. Stacy, are you with us? Or actually, it's from D. Andrew Solar, but it looks like Stacy Prince wrote it.
We are socially dissing, watching.
All right, you sounded a little bit space-agey there, but Stacy, that's a really, really good question. So, last, the feedback we got from parents.
Oh yeah, actually, I have a question. Yeah, sure. The question was, will remote learning at PMS have children be responsible for reporting to class and being taught live online versus random Google Classroom postings? Honestly, all of it depends on which model we're in. To speak to, if we were in full distance learning, whereas the whole building is distance learning, I've already spoken with our high school principal and the other building principals, absolutely, we will be doing a synchronous live level of distance learning where students have live meets, and the schedule will be maintained, that the, there will be a timed schedule for their class each day, and they will have live expectations throughout, whether that's live videos and presentations for the teachers, or opportunities for them to have small intervention groups, or provide feedback, or do assessment. But yes, there will be significantly increased live components in any distance learning, so we will be fully in distance learning. In the hybrid model, the, because we have our teachers, they will be busy teaching the students in front of them during the day, the distance learning components do have a bit more of an asynchronous level to them for two of the days that they are home. For one of the days they are home, it will be synchronous as well. That is the day that both cohort groups are home, and we will be having a schedule where every single class meets. So imagine Wednesday is that day everyone is home. On those Wednesdays, every single child, every single class will be live on, live virtually, as well as a live meeting of their advisory on that day, and interventions offered on that day as well. So there will certainly be live components to the hybrid model, however, not nearly as much as it would be if we were in full distance model. And that's just to the fact that while students are, while we're in school on those days, teachers, we can't ask teachers to both teach the kids in front of them and be monitoring a distance learning classroom at the exact same time. We may have check-ins, or we may have certain review portions of a lesson that have the ability to be live, but we can't fully, we're not going to be making the entirety of what that distance level is live during a hybrid. However, the part about the attendance, we certainly will be taking attendance in any of the three models that we are doing, hybrid, distance, or full in-person.
Stacy, do you have any follow-up on that?
No, I don't. It seems like my speaker's working now. I did have one other question farther down in the chat, which is probably a little bit separate of a subject. I don't know if you want to do that now, or?
Yeah, let's do that now. I just want to add one more component to the, to your original, your first question here. We heard from parents that for us to improve our distance learning, and, you know, whether that's, again, in the hybrid or full distance, but also the days students are remote learning, that parents wanted to see more live and in-person through Google Meet opportunities for the kids to interact with teachers, a clearer schedule of when the students would be expected to meet with their teachers, and some more workbooks and paper-based things that could be brought home so that the printers at home didn't have to run so much. We are working hard this summer to take those suggestions to heart, and you will certainly see, if we're doing anything distance next year, a lot more face-to-face or face-to-screen time between students and teachers, and students will have a clearer schedule during which we take attendance. So we're going to be raising the bar for our students and getting them out of bed and into class as they would normally if they were here in person.
That's great, thanks very much.
So why don't you ask your other question too?
I'm just curious, because we are a diverse community with our students that come from other communities. So what sort of precautions or considerations are being taken just considering that other communities may have different rates than our local community does, and all of the logistical issues that entails?
Excellent question. So the guidelines we received indicated at the county level that 10 per 100,000 new infections would be considered, or I should say, less than 10 per 100,000 would be considered green, meaning safe. 10 to 25 would be considered elevated, and a more than 25, we would be in the red zone. Because we have many Portland students who reside in Hartford, we're going to have to take into consideration the Middlesex County numbers and the Hartford County numbers. So I will be watching those numbers very closely. Our Chatham Health District will be reporting on the Hartford, I mean, excuse me, the Middlesex numbers, and the state is going to be reporting on the Hartford County numbers. So any decisions that I would make in terms of closing schools and moving us to a distance learning would be based in both Hartford County and Middlesex County transmission rates.
Thank you.
All right, who are we up to? So can we unmute Carrie King? Carrie, are you with us?
Hi.
Hi Carrie.
How are you?
Good, but why don't you ask your question so everybody can hear?
Um, well, I heard what you just said about looking at the infection rate of 10 per 100,000 people. But I was wondering, that's for the county, so how does it work on like the school level? Like if there is a family in the middle school, there are a parent or a child has tested positive, regardless if there's still a low rate, does that affect what decisions we make about schooling at the individual school?
Yeah, let me take that one Chuck.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Very, very, very much. So a couple of things, let me frame the question a little bit, and then I'll answer it specifically. We're going to have to make some changes, all of us, next year. I've been coming to work now for the past three months, and I have a new routine. Every time, every morning when I wake up, I pour myself my cup of coffee and then I get ready to go to work. And before I leave the house, I do a little bit of self-reflection. And I wonder, do I have a fever? Do I have any body chills? Do I have a sore throat? Has my sense of taste changed in any way? Am I 100%? If I'm not 100%, I stay home. I then ask myself, is anybody who I live with, my children, Jason Cassidy, are they sick? Is my wife 100%? If my children aren't 100% or my wife isn't 100%, I stay home. In the past, I have been very much guilty of popping a couple of Advil and powering through, right? That I often saw that as a sign of my work ethic, or, you know, hey, I'm just too busy, people are counting on me, I've got to get these things done, I'm going to make it through the day, I'll be okay and go to bed early. That is not acceptable anymore. If we are ever not feeling 100%, we must stay home. And that's the same for our children. Each morning, we're going to be training kids at the beginning of the year to self-assess. Our middle school kids are old enough that they should be able to consider their state of wellness. If they're not feeling at peak, everything's okay, or anybody in their house has been sick, we're going to say, please, stay home until you know that you're okay. We know that that's going to increase the amount of absences this year on our faculty. We're going to need more substitute teachers and our students. And we have to embrace that, that is okay. Stay home if you're not feeling okay. And if you're really not feeling okay, go see a doctor and ask the doctor to check you out and make sure that you're okay and that it isn't COVID in any way related. If a student came to school and got sick during the school day, which in my experience, which is long, kids get sick every day in school. If a student ever got a bellyache, a headache, and came down to the nurse's office, in the past, if a parent signed that Tylenol permission slip, oftentimes the nurse would give a couple of Tylenol and send the student back to class. That is also going to change. If at any time a student, a member of our faculty, a member of our staff demonstrated a sign or a symptom of COVID, they would be isolated in a containment room at our nurse's office, and they would be sent home. It would be dismissed to a parent, or if it's a member of the faculty, they would be dismissed if they're safely able to drive to go home. So we are absolutely going to be training our faculty and our students in what the signs and symptoms of COVID are. And if any of us ever exhibited COVID before school, we would be saying, stay home. During school, we would be isolating that student and then sending them home. To the second part of your question about what would happen if, God forbid, a student or a member of our faculty tested positive for COVID? You know, we are reading news reports now, and I just read one about the state of Georgia, and that happened there. Mr. Hershon is going to be keeping very close tabs on who our kids and our teachers are interacting with every day. That is why we are going to cohort kids, and we're going to limit the interactions of groups of kids to only the cohort that they're in. If a student ever tested positive, Mr. Hershon would be able to do something called contact tracing within the building.
That's right.
He would know who the other kids are that that student interacted with, and who the teachers were that that student interacted with, and what parts of the building that student was. If it turned out that a student tested positive, we would immediately notify the Chatham Health District, and we would be seeking advice for them about what we needed to do in terms of notifications to other people who might have been exposed, and what actions we as a school district would be taking, including potentially quarantining groups of students, potentially closing the school, or potentially closing the district for however long it would take for us to ensure that we were COVID-free and could return safe. So did that answer the question? I know that was a long-winded.
No, it did. Thank you very much for answering. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just that county number, like we're looking at our own community as well.
Absolutely, yep. Okay, we have Katrina, can we unmute Katrina?
Hi.
Hi Katrina. Great question, you want to ask it, and I'll let Mr. Hershon answer this one.
Okay, will students who begin the year as distance learners be taught by the Portland Middle School teachers? And then I have a few others that relate to that, if they don't get answered.
So we absolutely have some Portland Middle School teachers that will be involved within the, the learning for students who are not going to be coming back to school at the start of the year. There will be Portland Middle School teachers involved, and we are going to be using a number, a little bit different than if you've seen any of the elementary schools. One teacher doesn't manage the content and curriculum of all subject areas at the secondary level. So we will be doing a lot of collaboration between our teachers to develop a robust curriculum as we enter the year for our students that are going to remain in a distance. It will be facilitated by a Portland Middle School teacher, but all, not every single element of it may be from a Portland Middle School teacher. It will be developed in that way. But we are going to be using a lot of the resources that the state has provided from the Connecticut Learning Hub to make sure that we are providing instruction that meets the exact same standards of instruction that our in-school curriculum offers. We want to make sure of the integrity of that curriculum, that it is the correct level of rigor, and that we are holding students accountable to that work as well. So I hope that answers your question. That is something that we are, I'm, in transparency, we're still continuing to build in that level of curriculum. We brought our curriculum leaders in this week to begin that work. We'll be continuing to do so throughout the month of August. And more details will be coming around that information.
Okay. The other question was, would some of the same classes be offered such as Spanish or French? Algebra, if she's already taken pre-algebra? Or band, or her instrument?
So we will be making sure that there are middle school appropriate offerings, that you're going to get your core content areas taught to at the appropriate level of rigor that you need. Can I guarantee that it is going to be exactly what the, I can't necessarily guarantee it's going to be the exact same unified arts offerings at the same time that they normally would. However, they will still get their core instruction of math, science, English, language, arts, social. That will still occur, and they still will have. that will still occur, and they still will have unified arts offerings. I just can't guarantee exactly what those will be at this moment in time.
So I can also answer that in maybe a little bit more specific detail. So today, I released the parent survey. If anybody is hearing this and hasn't seen their email from me with a link to that survey, shoot me an email and check your spam first, it might have ended up there. What we're asking parents to do is by Monday at noon, complete that survey. The first question in that survey is, will you return for in-person learning, or are you going to ask to be participating in the distance learning? By Monday at noon, we will know how many seventh and eighth grade students are requesting distance learning. We'll look closely at those students. Ms. McDermott, Mr. Hershon, and I will figure out what courses those students need, what they've already taken, what math course they're taking, how many have requested Spanish or French, and we're going to do our best then to design a schedule that matches those needs for the specific students.
My last question goes on to then, if the school at some point has to go full distance learning, and do the students who were already distance learning then come back into our school system, back with their fellow students and teachers that they're used to?
Yep. There will be a transition, obviously, and there will be transition for every student because students that were used to now being in the school building will have to get used to what it's like, again, being back in distance learning. So, and that's the reason why we are, I mentioned very specifically, that we will be ensuring common standards of instruction that are occurring throughout our distance learning, because we need to make sure that if that were to occur, we can transition those students back into that similar environment with their Portland middle school peers.
The only complicating factor I could see with that is that I can see a very real scenario where we might transition from full hybrid to distance learning for a short period of time, right? I mean, it's possible that we could go from hybrid to distance learning for, you know, three to five days while we collaborated with the Chatham Health District, did the disinfecting and contact tracing necessary to get the all clear and come back. So certainly, if we went to distance learning and it looked like we would be in distance learning for a long time, that might give us the opportunity to reexamine the teaching assignments for the kids that were already in that program. But if it looked like the distance learning would only be a short duration while we did what we need to do to get the all clear, then it might not make sense to change the schedules in any significant way.
We don't want to cause two disruption. If it's only going to be a week, we don't want to cause two transitional disruptions for the student.
Yeah, I completely understand that. Okay, those are all my questions, thank you.
Okay, of course. So can we unmute? Koji had two good questions I've seen here about how we're going to develop cohorts and then whether we would be live streaming. So Koji, are you with us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can, yeah, it was Donna, okay.
Yeah, so yeah, it's under my wife's account. So hey, first off, thanks for doing this, this is great to see and hear, so appreciate it. So my question is, I have an eighth grader, so as we talk about cohorts, are you going to do cohorts based off of the math groups or by band or chorus? Because I see them almost being conflicting cohort groups.
Yes, so we started. Sure, yeah, sure. So I can answer that because I've actually been working closely with Ms. McDermott to really take a look at how to make that work. I kind of gave her an assignment on my first day, say, hey, I want you to take a look at, these are all the elective choices for world language, for band and choir, and these are advanced math numbers, but how are we going to make sure these kids can get all the things that they require and do so safely? And we are able to build a schedule where that happens. Band and choir will look a little differently in this model, so that not all band students and all choicestars are going to be just in one cohort. First of all, there's too many of them. And secondly, at this time, it's not going to be safe to pull them all into one room for band or one room for choir at the same time. We'll be doing more of an ensemble strategy for band and choir to start off with, and that does work with our numbers for advanced mathematics as well. So we are able to ensure that at least for band, choir, and for the advanced math placement, that they'll be able to get all of those needs within the cohorting plan. So that was something that we looked at pretty rigorously within the schedule. Going to the block schedule made that a little bit easier to do. So that's been making us able to keep student cohorts still meeting the requirements and the rigorous curriculum that students need.
And one other note about how we would form the cohorts, and this is a practical consideration. We're going to do our best to keep families together, right? So if you have siblings that are, you know, maybe in the earlier grades or in high school, we'll make sure that your middle school student is with his or her brother or sister, who may be at Gildersleeve or Brownstone or the high school, and that will just be more convenient for you. We're also going to give parents the opportunity to recommend who else they might want in that cohort with your children. So when you fill out the survey that I sent out today, you're going to see a section where we say to you, hey, for childcare reasons, it might be helpful if you matched me up with the following other kids, whether they're middle school kids or others, and we'll do our best to accommodate that. We do ask, of course, that please don't request that you match the cohorts based on friend groups or everybody on the same Little League team. That would be difficult to accommodate, but if there are legitimate childcare reasons or that people are in the same household together, we would definitely give top priority to that when forming the cohorts.
Absolutely, especially, you know, in a typical year, I would not necessarily look to put twins or siblings in the same classes together. However, in this model, with the heightened need to limit the number of kids that they're with, that just protects the household more. So instead of the possible 10, possible 20 or 40 students they could interact with, if it was in a full return or a hybrid, it cuts it down to 10 to 20. There's a great question that I don't see a name associated, because it just says from iPhone, but I think it goes well with the cohort. Do you mind if I read that?
Yeah, great. But Koji, Mr. Koji, stay on the line, because I want to make sure we answer your question about live streaming for the kids who choose the distance learning program too.
Yeah, just because this references cohorts, another parent asked, small cohorts seem like they'd be at risk for bullying issues. What's being done to guard against this? That's really one of the leading factors for why the Climate Committee today recommended, and we're going to go forward with this, to increase the frequency of how often we do things like advisory, the direct social-emotional learning curriculum that we need to implement, especially because they will be unused to this. I mean, this is the elementary model of being with those kids all day. There's a reason we transitioned in middle school years to have different peers throughout the day. Obviously, we're doing this for the primary reason of safety right now. So, but knowing that, we need to plan to give really direct and clear instruction for students about social, building positive social relationships, active listening, making sure that we have strong conflict resolution strategies. That's why we're increasing the frequency in which we do advisory, because absolutely, one of the first things on my mind when we're grouping students together more frequently is making sure that we are hyper-aware of the relationships and building strong relationships and positive relationships between students and their peers and students and those teachers, so they constantly all have a go-to individual that they could advocate for them should they grow to an area of concern.
So is it Mr. Koji? I'm sorry, are you still with us?
Yeah, yeah, this is Jim. I'm on my wife's account.
Okay, so Jim, you had another question about live streaming?
Yeah, so if we go to full or even during the hybrid, would you go to do live streaming? Like I've seen some other schools are doing Zoom, and it seems to be a little bit easier for kids to follow, but then also, I think it's more, it instills more discipline than just giving an assignment and getting it done by the end of the week.
Okay, so that's a little bit of a complicated question. I'm going to answer it in two ways. So it might seem like, but wouldn't it make sense that if we were in a hybrid and a teacher had, you know, 16 students in his or her English class, that eight might be in front of them, and then just like I'm doing now, I have a camera there where the other eight would be at home, interacting with me and his or her students like this? I think that that's what you're describing as live streaming. So we have to be really careful about that, and I'll explain why. There's a law called the Family Education Rights to Privacy Act, and if we were beaming our teachers out like this, and a parent or aunt or uncle or a grandparent were also watching that class, that would be a violation of that privacy because that parent would have a front row seat to other children's learning, right? So we have to be very mindful of that, and we don't want to embarrass anybody. The fact is, I've taught a long time and been a principal a long time, things happen in classrooms, you know? Kids may misbehave, you know, they, things might happen. And we don't want that to be a community conversation about how well Johnny or Sally might be behaving in class, or how smart they might be, or how well, how good a student they might be. That's not really appropriate for a community conversation or a front row seat to if it's not the student. So we're a little bit wary about live streaming classes. Now that said, there certainly will be opportunities for the teacher, even though they have the eight students in front of them, to use Google Meet to take attendance and check in with the other students. So the way we're envisioning it is, the teacher would have the eight students in front of them live, would have their Chromebook in front of them with the eight students there in front of just the teacher, and say for the first 10 minutes of class, the teacher would take attendance with the kids in front of him or her, and then the kids online, direct to the students online about what they should be working on, and let them go work on it while the teacher worked with the other students in person in class, and then checked back in occasionally with the kids who are working asynchronously in their Google classroom or in their Google Meet. Does that make sense?
Sorry, I was unmuted. Yeah, it does, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay. All right, so can we unmute Tracy Moden? And she has a question, Chuck, about advisory. And will advisory just be within the cohort? Before, Tracy, did you want to elaborate in any way on that question?
Um, my question is more, I just know in the past, the advisory has been amongst grade level, across grade levels actually, and across classes, and I wonder if that's what makes kids comfortable to talk about some of the subjects that come up at advisory that they're not in their classroom that they're in most of the time? And now that they will not be switching around, and they'll be in this one cohort all day, will the groups just be a small group that's part of their bigger class? And how effective do you think that will be?
Yep. And I actually met, that was the topic of my conversation with our school-based Climate Committee today, in how are we going to, how is advisory going to work to build off those relations, especially with the physical limitations that we're going to have? It will be within the cohort, and we're still discussing, our goal though, within a cohort of 20 students, say we're in the full reopening model, our goal will be to kind of pair two teachers within that cohort, so that it could be split into really two groups of 12, or two groups of 10 within any group, so that you still have one primary teacher knowing really well a group of 10 students. But a second teacher that will be part of that as well for putting those lessons together. In terms of, we did speak a lot about the values of the multi-grade mixing of advisory in the past, and in general, even without the distance, without the COVID-related changes we need to make, the shift to grade-level specific social-emotional learning instruction was something that the majority of teachers and feedback I got from students in our initial conversations were looking for, because yes, you're right, there are times that being out of your group of students can make it easier to engage in different conversations. But what a lot of teachers were finding was that younger students were really struggling to engage with some of the older students in those groups as well. So we're going to be, for safety's sake, doing the cohorts at the same grade level, but it is something that we are valuing, we're looking to do anyway, for the benefit of being able to target our social-emotional learning curriculum to the grade level. And that really gives us an ability to plan for what each student needs, not just look at the school as a blanket.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate the district's focus on social-emotional learning, given all that's going on. So thank you both so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So if we can unmute Carrie Bulger, who has a really good and important question. Carrie, are you with us?
Hi there.
Hi, Carrie.
My question is, how will students who opt for distance learning from the start be included in extracurriculars, including clubs and athletics?
Yeah, so I can take that, sure, sure. So yeah, for a student that's opting out, like I said, I want to make sure that extracurriculars that can be offered in a distance environment are, A, because it's the safest way for us to maintain it, any of those clubs or extracurricular activities that we are running virtually, those students will have access to. The ones that we are running in person, they will not, because again, we are maintaining, trying to do our best to maintain the integrity of our cohorts there, and that is, to me, my most concerning area, that we're going to be evaluating very strictly over what clubs, activities, and athletics run live. And I have the information on the students that are there in the cohorts in the building, whereas I don't for those that are at home throughout the day. So yes, they will absolutely have opportunities of extracurriculars, and we are hoping to run a number of those in a distance environment, but the in-person ones will be for those that are in school.
Yeah, and to begin the year, I don't see us running a lot of in-person things.
Right, most will start in distance.
Right, we're going to be really careful at the beginning of the year to encourage our clubs and activities to go as much as possible online. And again, that's just to get our feet wet, let's make sure the numbers stay where they are and watch it carefully. Certainly, as the year goes on, if we're doing great and we're back in fall and the infection rates are still very low, or hopefully zero, then we're going to start to grow more comfortable with it. As for athletics, I'll be completely honest, I don't know what's going to happen yet. We know UConn just canceled today, the Ivy League is canceled, there are many other conferences that are canceling, the CIAC has pushed off the start of athletics until late in September. I would be shocked, frankly, if football and other, the high-contact ones ran. So we're going to have to watch athletics carefully, no decisions have been made yet. So athletics aside, let's kind of hold and see where that ends up, see what the CIAC decides, let's see if the governor or the superintendent's associations weigh in about our comfort level with it. The activities, if we can push those online, then yes, definitely, we would welcome and encourage our students' distance learning to be involved in those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we answered the next question. So let's jump down to, I think we answered the next one too. This was about our students residing in Hartford. So I'll jump down to, oh boy, James McKay. Yeah, that's a, that's a very question, right? And not just, let's unmute James, and James, ask your question, but throw in their fire drills and any other safety things that we do.
Hi, this is actually Carla McKay, I, his wife.
Oh, hi, Carla.
Hi. Just curious about any fire drills, active shooter drills that were, that's going to bring the kids together? How do we, and you know, you can explain it greater to the older kids, but also, you know, maybe in Gildersleeve and Valley View where the schools are smaller, or the kids are younger, and, but kind of like to hear how you plan to either continue that, or are you going to put it on hold?
Well, we're certainly not going to be putting safety drills in general on hold. Those are, it's going to, I mean, and first of all, I don't think the state, there's no way the state would allow us to. Normally, we want to. The one thing I want to be very clear, we are planning for the safety of COVID, but that does not take away the safety, I want to make sure we'll be safe. I want to make sure we'll be safe school, full stop, not just related to COVID. And it is critical that we run those safety drills and that those protocols are very clear for students. Now, will there have to be changes making how we run those safety drills? Absolutely. Things that can continue to occur as they are, things like our shelter-in-place or lockdown procedures, because the students are already in those locations, we'll still be able to do. Things that ask students to leave the building. We will absolutely have to be reevaluating to see how do we want students to locate? From my understanding, they were doing so at the front of the building previously. In adjusting it, we're going to, we're going to plan for how can we spread them out further. We have, I mean, we're very lucky here at the secondary complex to have quite a great amount of space behind our building with our fields and our athletic facilities. So we will be looking to how can we use that space a bit more strategically to make sure we can still run safety drills and do so safely.
That's a really good question.
Very important.
And that is really at the forefront of our considerations. But Chuck is absolutely right, you know, our kids need to know what to do, COVID or not, if, God forbid, there was an emergency that we needed to respond to. So we will train them how to do that and how to do that as safely as possible in the context of the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Laverty, there's a name I know. Hi, Cindy.
She's not in there right now.
Oh, okay. So Cindy asked us about the infection ratios and whether it would be, you know, one day or not. So the guidelines call for a seven-day average. That is what we would be using to consider the number of infections. Now, that said, here's my advice to everyone. The same, well, one, find a reputable news source that you can regularly check and consider COVID the same way you would consider a blizzard moving up the eastern seaboard, right? It's not going to be a surprise, I would imagine, if, if I were in a position where I was saying we're moving to distance learning. The media would be reporting about upticks in the region because that's what the media's been doing a pretty good job at since the beginning of this. So generally speaking, it is a seven-day rolling average that is reported in terms of the Chatham Health District and the state data that we received. But trust me when I say I'm going to be watching the news broadcasts every day. And if there's a major spike on any one day, I'm not going to wait six days to close the schools. You know, if it were a bad outbreak, say in Middletown at Wesleyan or something, and our students might be exposed, I'm going to be on the phone with, with our Chatham Health District officials and making decisions in a little bit more real time. But I don't think, unless people are tuning out of the news entirely, anybody's going to be surprised by any decisions that we'd make in terms of closing the schools and returning to distance learning. All right, so.
Lisa Daggett there?
Yeah, Lisa, we talked about the middle school sports. Yes, we will follow the CIAC and be making decisions about athletics in the context of.
But she has a question about gym class and band specific.
Yeah, that's good. Watch, grab that one.
Yeah, so how will you conduct gym class and band lessons while still maintaining proper social distance? So, and Connecticut did a really good job with explaining around gym, too, coming up with some protocols for what types of activities should be appropriate within gym class. We'll be focusing quite a bit on the health components of gym, on personal wellness. But yes, we will still be doing physical activity with students, but it may be more static personal activity, whether that's some level and stretching components or personal fitness, things that don't require. I can't, we're not going to be doing a game with a ball that's going to get passed around. We're not sharing that kind of material. But we will still be doing the opportunity for students to stay physically fit. We are going to be creative with that and how we, how we plan for that. But the state guidelines have been, they've recommended things like yoga and tai chi as elements that we put within our curriculum. So again, all of this, as I mentioned earlier, our curriculum specialists are working now to kind of see how do we adjust our curriculum for the start of this year. We will definitely front-load a lot of our health and wellness curriculum to ensure that we are delivering that. But we want to make sure we get kids the opportunity to be physically active. In terms of band, and as I mentioned earlier, students will be, and choirs as well, we'll be using more of an ensemble approach where, say that, well, there will, so for example, with five seventh-grade cohorts, and within three of those cohorts or two of those cohorts, there are students that take bands. Ms. Ketterer will be pulling students on one particular day from the, that she would have a band class scheduled, and during that time, she would be pulling individual, small groups of students, five or six at a time, into the band room where they can do significant social distancing, far over the six to 10 feet. And we are still waiting to get a better number for the guidelines for a band and choir, for when you're projecting your voice and you're using a musical instrument, what that does to the social distancing requirements. We are waiting to get that, and it should be coming. Guidelines for what that social distancing should be, whether that should be 10 feet, 15 feet. And we're going to make sure that we keep those ensemble groups to a size that would accommodate those spaces so that we can ensure we have a small group of students with a lot of space between each other. But they will be grouped within a cohort so that she's, that Ms. Ketterer is never pulling students from different cohorts to do band or choir, band lessons, or Sir Tucker is doing choir lessons from kids that are coming from different parts of the building. They will always be students that have interacted with each other throughout the day already.
All right, looks like we have, we have one more. And this is from Stacy Prince. Can class be recorded and shared securely?
So it kind of falls in line with what Dr. Britton mentioned about the live streaming of classes. Can we record certain sections of the class? So if there is a mini lesson that a teacher is planning, that that teacher, again, is going to be make, would have to make the video for that instruction to go this is anyway, is there potential to record some small sections of class that we can then post at another time for students to engage with? Absolutely. But again, that's going to come with the, the planning and transitioning of our curriculum and how we're going to deliver it in this model. But again, I don't anticipate that we will be recording a full class to be posted, given the privacy that I need to make sure we maintain for all of our students.
So there's no opportunity to record lectures or whatever? That the teacher would be delivering to a sort of a virtual audience and then have that play as the lesson on, on someone who may be absent that day or someone who is looking to review something during their distance day?
Got it. Let me, let me take that a little differently. For how you just described it there, there is the potential for that. That again is going to be in planning with teachers. And again, that's, there has to be professional learning developed for teachers in order to do that securely. Because that, because that's not necessarily live and synchronously doing it, but doing it so that it can be recorded later date. So for example, if we were in distance learning and providing a lecture, I would want that to be recorded for any kid that could access in that moment in time. So yes.
What you're describing is actually an area of professional development that we're going to pursue with our teachers this year called the flipped classroom, where teachers would be using Screencastify or video to record and deliver the direct instruction parts of the lesson, the mini lessons or, or the content review or the skill review, so that then their time can be spent as opposed to, you know, delivering direct instruction and modeling, actually helping the students practice the skills. It's a, it's a new area of professional development. It's part of 21st century learning, and it's called the flipped classroom. But as you describe it, if you're describing the flipped classroom, then yes, that is a direction that we're going.
Absolutely. I apologize for my misinterpretation of the questions written. Because how you described it sounds exactly what I, what I would hope is the best level of blended learning within this environment. We want to maximize the talent of our teachers so that when they are with kids, they are responding to the individualized needs of kids. The delivering of content, when it's able to be done at a distance, we want that to be done at a distance.
For sure.
Thank you.
Was that good, Lisa? Okay. So I had another question here, some from, it's from iPhone. I'm not sure who iPhone is, but when kids stay home just in case, like as I described before, are they homesick or are they distance learning? That's a really good question.
It is a really good question.
You stumped me a little on that one, right?
Yeah.
So look, I would say this, we're going to have to, historically, you know, if a student were out a day or two with a head cold, you know, we might send some work home or send an email home with work to, you know, kind of keep them up to date. We're going to have to do a better job of that this year because the very real reality is that we might have more students out for longer lengths of time. If a contact tracer called home and said, you know, hey, you may have been exposed out of an abundance of caution, stay home for 14 days, then definitely we're going to need to develop the systems to more assertively keep students engaged. So I could certainly see that, you know, if a student were quarantined for 14 days, they would definitely be involved in either the distance learning program or in the, if we were in a hybrid, the home remote learning cohort. So that's, that's got me thinking. I don't have a really good answer in terms of specifics.
But that's honestly, that's why we're doing this, because that question is excellent and helpful drives some of the planning. Because you're right, the one day staying home for the exact reason that we want students to stay home for, if they have even just a little fever that day or a little cough, we want them to stay home. And doing that positive practice, we want to still maintain that their ability to get a strong rigorous education. So we will take a look at that. What do we do for that one or two days? Because it's pretty clear when it's, when it's a longer period of time, absolutely. But I want to make sure that we can facilitate something that is manageable for students and something we can make very timely for students. So, because we have the resources that we can sure, we can certainly look at. But it's definitely something that I will be working more to plan on.
Great question, great question. Look, I mean, get us thinking here.
That's great.
All right, so last one I see here was, was Todd. How would we unmute Bustada? And the question is, how would quizzes and tests be implemented between in-school students and distance learning students?
Before you do that, Lisa Daggett wants to ask the follow-up question. She was first, just wanted to.
Okay, let's go with Lisa.
Hi, sorry, stuck on mute.
No problem.
So I'm just wondering, when you answered the question about kind of what's going to happen with bands, you mentioned something about Mrs. Ketterer pulling kids, like a couple kids or groups of kids out for individual lessons. Is that meaning that she's going to pull them out of like a math class or an English class?
No.
Isn't there a designated lesson period for them?
There'll be a designated lesson period for them. We're going to have a class on the schedule that's enrichment, that we're really going to be, we're, I'm going to be working with teachers to kind of develop what we're calling an enrichment period. It'll take the place of what was traditionally a deer period in the middle school. There are a lot of learning needs that are going to come with, with this very different entry to school, whether that is having direct instruction around executive functioning skills that students need to develop organizational skills in the middle school or study skills. And in eighth grade, we're really going to try and push our students to develop capstone-like experiences where they can develop really, following kind of that Google 20% model where they're investigating areas of interest to really follow up a research topic. So that's really more of an independent study component, and that is where Ms. Ketterer will be pulling those band classes from, not from the core instruction of a math or science or social studies class.
Okay.
However, as has happened in the past, there have been times, now that's what she'll be doing for core instruction of band. She has always maintained, and the band curriculum has always maintained, lessons that occur over the course of a week or two that she cycles through with students around their individual instrument. And those have traditionally pulled students out of, it rotated what academic class it might pull them out of. Within the block schedule elements, one of the benefits is she still has the capacity to do that without them losing an entire period of class. She would do that for a short period of time. So the answer is a little of both. The primary band instruction will occur at a designated time specifically for band and for choir or for this enrichment that I'm talking about. And individual lessons, as they always have, will get pulled out of classes. However, the benefit of, again, this block schedule is that it will never be the entirety of that class, it will be a portion of.
Okay. And then what about, if you could talk about other kind of classes that are more hands-on, like things like art or even like science labs? How do you do that in cohorts? And if you're saying teachers are really cycling through kids, so kids aren't moving to a science lab, to an art room, how do you kind of give them that type of instruction?
Yep. And that information would come to, you, the, the labs that you would run in science are probably far more simulations than they would be the physical labs that are, that you would think of traditionally. Art and things of that nature, again, we're not sharing materials. So we're going to be very creative in how we ensure that that instruction is adapted to this environment where we cannot share materials and we cannot work shoulder to shoulder. So there will absolutely be a change from what it was traditionally done. And that again is the work the teachers are doing, going to be doing right now. For art, students will have the ability to be, we will be, they will have their own set of supplies to engage with their artwork. And we'll be, again, we'll be developing that curriculum all throughout this month. Because yes, there will, we are not going to be going back to that traditional lab environment where we have four kids cooking together for family, for fax, for family consumer science. We need to adapt to that curriculum so that we still provide that instruction. We still have those opportunities. And when in a hybrid model, we do have the opportunities to have students do things like those lab-based activities at home and then get feedback around those in the classroom. But for, as for grouped labs, those will be very different in this environment.
Okay, okay. Just my last question real quick was regarding the CIAC regulations that came out last week for sports. I just want to confirm that that does apply to high school and middle school and that any decision that we make about when we play, how we play, what it looks like, will the decision be the same at the high school and the middle school level?
Likely, pretty much.
Yeah, likely.
The only difference is, is access. If, if high schools, if, you know, if middle schools in other towns are all shutting down and we have nobody to play, then that does, that does, you know, that is the potential to change. But likely, and I met with our athletic director and our high school principal, Ms. Olson, yesterday. And we're pretty aligned in the desire to keep both consistent, especially for the, for when we're able to maintain it, maintain it in a safe environment.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, so can we unmute Bustada? And there's a question there about quizzes and tests and the difference between quizzes and tests between students in person and students' distance learning.
Yeah, how you doing? This is Donnie Bustamante. Thank you for this. This is great. This is very informative, gave me a lot of information. This is great. So the only question I have, so both with the quizzes and tests, do the kids in school, in class, are they taking the test the same time the kids at distance learning test? Or even in the hybrid model, does the kids take the test when they're in school? Or do they have, or the kids in, and are in school, take the test and then the kids are not distance learning? Are they taking it at a different time?
So it's going to depend on the test. I hate giving that leeway of it depends, but for when talking tests and quizzes, it really will depend. If it's a performance task, it'll certainly be kind of at different times that is best appropriate for whether, especially in the hybrid model, whether in-person or distance is most appropriate for that. There are certain assessments that we will certainly be doing at the exact same time, especially things, small quick checks, things that are more cumulative review, things that aren't necessarily, don't have to be done at the exact spot of a piece of curriculum. However, because in the hybrid model that you were mentioning, students are slightly off on their instruction a couple of days. You know, you see your videos on the days you are at home and then get your, then apply that learning on the days you're with your teacher. And while you're doing that, the other group is seeing their next set of videos before they come in. So they will be slightly off based off of their cohort for some assessments. But again, for some, they will be doing it at the same time. So ultimately, unfortunately, the answer is it's a combination of both. It just depends on what type of assessment is being given.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard question because there, there are many, many, many different types of assessments we do, from universal screens to baseline assessments to formative assessments to unit tests, which, you know, sort of fall into that pretty classic high-stakes test or unit test. Many will be the same, some may be a little bit different. Many will be the same, some may be a little bit different. That's the work that needs to be done with, by our, our teachers and curriculum specialists over the summer.
Yeah, my inclination is things like, like you just said, unit tests, the larger high-stakes tests would most likely be same time, just to ensure the integrity of the test. And absolutely. But again, for a middle school, and really what drives us, such as the formative checks, to me, are the most valuable piece of assessment and feedback data we get. And those are going to be developed exactly at the right time based off of the curriculum. So again, it is that combination.
Thank you very much. All right, so last question here from iPhone Zoom, and I'm not sure this is, but this is a really interesting question. And the question is, has there been any talk of creating ombudsman to help families advocate as things move forward? Do you know who iPhone was? Maybe we could unmute that person. Are there several? Oh.
I'm unmuted. Hi.
I, I'm sure your name isn't iPhone Zoom, so if you could introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jay.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
My name is Jay. I have a rising eighth grader.
How are you?
I'm okay. Thank you for spending this evening talking to us all.
Our pleasure. So the question about an ombudsman, so I will maybe ask you to clarify a little bit about that, mostly because when you say ombudsman, I think, you know, special education advocate, you know, that, that's something I'm more familiar with, that, you know, sometimes when students attend PPTs, they bring an ombudsman with them to advocate. Is that specifically what you're talking about or are you talking more, more generally?
Yeah, I'm thinking more generally. So I'm thinking back to spring, and of course, a lot of things have changed, but we had an extremely negative experience with one specific teacher. When I approached administration, I was basically told tough, everyone's doing their best, but that's not really positive or helpful. And I found myself really wishing that there was someone who was advocating for families specifically.
You know, I would encourage you, I'm not sure the, the exact circumstance or the context, I certainly hope that wasn't the message you, message you received and, and would be disappointed if it, if it was and would, would personally want to know about that because, you know, I can see how that would rub somebody the wrong way.
Absolutely.
What I would say, though, is if you have ideas for something like that, I know Mr. Hershon is going to be putting together PTO.
Yeah, actually, I want to use this as an opportunity to actively work. I think any opportunity, I think, I've done two meet greetings with families so far, and I've put it in two or three different email communications. I am actively working to get the, and it, this is something that has existed for a long time, the middle school PTO. I'm actively looking to get that really up and going once again for Portland Middle School, not only for this, but because I think it is such a benefit to the community to have that, that organization up and running.
So could you?
To be able to use that organization to really help be a communication hub for me to facilitate speaking, the community being able to come in and bring those issues of concern to me and me be able to communicate back out to the community along with the other communication that'll occur throughout our year.
Right, so that sounds perfect. This would be a good opportunity to post how we would interface with that forming group?
Say that one more time? Sure, so how are you going to put the information about when, when are they going to be, how are you going to?
How can I, I mean, how can I find out more about it?
Absolutely. So I'm actually going to be emailing, in my Friday email this week, I actually already have most of the draft, is, is going to be a request for a meeting next week for anyone interested in, in the PTO. Because, and I would be hoping to do a meet next week with interested individuals, because my job would not be to assign who the, the chairs and presidents of that organization were, but to get, but I'm working to facilitate and get the parents who are interested in the room together so that we can talk about what the logistics are about getting that up and running. And then from that point, my hope is to have a PTO board. And from that board, I, my goal would be to communicate, have a monthly meeting with the PTO, which includes not just the board, but all parents, because every parent within Portland, within Portland Middle School, child would be part of that PTO, and to have monthly meetings with that organization to help advocate for school needs and support the school. I think that's incredibly important. I want to have a lot of transparency and involvement with the community, especially as someone new coming into this building. This is completely aside from COVID. I want to learn everything I can about Portland and become ingratiated with this community. So I really want to leverage the PTO for, for doing all of that, for doing that work and leverage the great ideas that are out there in the community. So I would look to meet monthly with the PTO. I would allow the, the individuals selected by the board to help drive when that would be. I've done it in the past in previous districts that were, we would switch off, off each month, whether it was during the day or in the afternoon or evening, to accommodate families of all types. And really, my goal next week is to, to hold that meeting, start that conversation so that we can get that up and running. But I truly appreciate the request, the interest, because it's certainly something that has been, I think a lot of people have heard me talk about it so far. It's definitely something that's high on my priorities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, look, I, I think the questions tonight were terrific, completely spot on. If, as you go away from this, our time together, if you have any more questions, we did post our email addresses here, please, please get in touch with us. Let me just leave you with two closing thoughts and then we'll, we'll wrap it up. I did send the parent survey out this morning. If you haven't gotten it, check your spam folder and/or email me and I'll send it to you again. We are asking parents to give us that feedback and commit to the in-person or distance learning by Monday at noon. So take tomorrow, take the weekend, think deeply about it, ask us any follow-up questions. We want you to make an informed decision, and we're going to use that information starting next week to finish our class lists and schedules. Now the big one. There is a lot of interest about whether we are going to open fully in person or open hybrid and when that decision is going to be made by whom and how it's going to be communicated. Next Tuesday night at 7:00 is a regularly scheduled Portland Board of Education meeting. I anticipate that I will be making a recommendation to the Portland Board of Education about whether to open in hybrid or open in a full reopening model, and it is a board of education prerogative to make that decision. So if you'd like to get a front row seat to the deliberations and how that decision is made, please join us next Tuesday. It's going to be a Zoom meeting like this for the Portland Board of Education meeting. If you're unable to join that meeting, I anticipate that certainly by this time next week, we will be communicating whether it will be a hybrid or a full reopening come September 1st. All of that, of course, is predicated on the transmission rates staying where they are right now, which is very low. So please keep wearing your masks and social distancing and doing whatever we need to do to keep those numbers where they are. That says it. Mr. Hershon, any closing thoughts? Thank you for joining us.
No, I've just been overwhelmed by the level of support and community and the, it kind of flooded with, with welcome messages. So I really appreciate parents that have reached out already, to all staff members and students I've gotten a chance to meet with so far. It is, it feels like a weird thing to say amongst these times, but I am incredibly excited for this year, despite the challenges that we'll have in front of us. We are going to work to make sure that this is incredibly positive and really awesome experience for your kids this year. That's my promise to you, because I want to ensure that every child that comes into the middle school or experiences middle school education through the Portland public school system this year has a world-class experience.
Awesome. All right, everyone, I hope you get power back on soon. For those of you who are without, otherwise, have a wonderful evening, a great weekend, and I look forward to seeing your responses to the survey. Good night.